Nice.
All right, we should be ready to go.
All right, I will call to order this Thursday, March 27th, 2025, meeting of the Moab City Planning Commission at 6:05 PM. In attendance tonight, we have three planning commissioners. Myself and Miles Lofton are here in Chambers Live, and Jill Tatten is joining us virtually on Zoom. We also have city staff, Cory Shirtlove, Johanna Blanco, and Kelsey Garcia over there, as well as some folks in the audience, including applicants for an agenda item tonight, and Alexi as well. All right, first item of business is citizens to be heard. I don't believe we received any emails on anything on the agenda. At least we didn't, confirming. And it does not appear that anyone is here for that portion of the meeting. So we can move on to approval of minutes from the March 13th, 2025 regular meeting, which was our last meeting. I was not in attendance at, but I believe Jill and Miles both were. So if you guys have any amendments or anything on that meeting minutes, go for it.
Jill, I didn't notice anything, did you?
No, I did not. I so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 13th, 2025.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes and a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor of approving the minutes from our March 13th meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, minutes, minutes approved by all three of us. Next is our first action item of the evening, which is a public hearing. This is action item 4.1. So 4.1.1 consideration and possible approval of planning resolution number 06, 2025. A planning resolution approving the parking special exception request for
Nine.
For nine.
Typo.
Okay. So okay, for nine parking spaces and payment in lieu for two parking spaces for the press, for the press, eating and retail establishment, change of use on property located at 35 East Center Street, Moab, Utah, 84532. This is a briefing and a possible action. Take it away, Johanna.
So some background on this application.
Could I just ask that you put a brief note?
Yes.
Of the recording will catch it, thank you.
Absolutely. Rebecca McAllister submitted her pre-application in October, which is a change of use, which triggered some new parking requirements. She is moving into, one moment, let me share my screen. She is moving into the old TI building at 35 East Center Street. Pardon, trying to get to my matrix here. Okay, so the total number of parking spaces for this new use is 24. There are 13 spaces that are granted from the previous use, which leaves us 11 spaces still required. The building has five that are existing, but not legally no legal way to get there, so they also require a special exception to be granted as spaces. We recommend that the remaining six spaces of those two would be provided by payment in lieu, which leaves us four spaces that additionally need to be granted special exception. So in total, nine special exception to payment in lieu. Would you like to
Yeah.
speak to the group at all? Wonderful.
So we'll ask the applicant to come up. If you just say your name, please, that would be great. And then I'll say about your plans.
Thanks, I'm Rebecca McAllister, and just coming back to talk through this project again and why we're asking for special exception in parking. The plan here is to move into the Times Independent Building and remodel, restructure to turn it into a mixed-use facility in the downtown corridor. So allowing existing business of desert thread to stay on the property and inviting Moss Cafe to sublease, come onto the property and expand their current business, opening a second location, and Artisan, which is the retail space that I had on Main Street that was displaced, which initiated this whole
To another parking exception applicant.
Yes.
Ironically, it's like the go around.
It's going around. Yeah, so that prompted the change of use for the building because it's adding food is the main element.
For sure.
So Moss Cafe and myself as Artisan will combine efforts to make a kitchen, to add a kitchen to the property. Part of the plan with the kitchen, not only to offer a food element, more, more of a food element than Moss Cafe can offer right now at their first location, but also to open up opportunities for other businesses in town, like some caterers that could come in and use the kitchen. When we're not using it, we want to have like supper clubs and just some things that we currently are lacking that we would love to add.
Top-up restaurant, heck yeah.
Yes. Yeah, also there's space in the building to have
Yeah.
artists and workshops and community gatherings. So our intent is to really make this a space for the community foremost. And we know that tourists will find us as well, and that's great because we do appreciate that. But really, the the intent, the vibe, the decisions that we're making are to create a pretty cool hub for the community. And that's why we came asking for the parking exception. Also, we, I mentioned this at the last meeting, but just really trying to pull some of the traffic and the focus off of Main Street and just bulking up that Center Street corridor, I guess it would be. Yeah. That is the plan.
Great, so the amount of actual parking that you all would be providing at the end of the day is
Eighteen, if you count of five spaces that don't technically have legal access, but will pretty much always have access because even though that easement section is owned by the Wells Fargo folks, you can't really put a building there, and they have expressed support in allowing you to access the parking you have via that.
Exactly.
Say easement via their property or
Hot hole alley.
Yeah, hot hole alley, yeah.
But I, yeah, the 13 that was, if I might jump in for some of this and I'll expand a little bit on the recommendation as well. Is when we're looking at this, within the downtown core, there was an established use that had no more parking that's being proposed now, but obviously a much higher number than five. That was kind of understood throughout the core as uses came in. Those were just built into those uses or site plan approvals or whatever might have been in the past. So onsite, provided in reality are five, but by title are zero. That's kind of the, for the little bit more complex ornamentation of how this works is by title, there are zero spaces from the planning department's recognition, but clearly there are five spaces on site that have not been sorted out in title. Therefore, of the nine, we're more or less trying to subtract those from consideration for the fee and lieu percentage. So typically, our standard is to recommend to staff the maximum 30% fee in lieu of whatever the accepted parking would be. In this case, there, there's five are kind of legitimately there and will be used even though not by legal title yet. It'd be great for us to sort out the alley for a number of other users to get that cleared up. But for these applicants at this time, that's not something that they could really accomplish just with their lift, nor could the C just on our lift.
Yeah.
So of the six, because again, 30% is the maximum, so I don't think we're out of be it our statutory abilities nor our precedent we've set with other, but to not require fee and lieu would be out of precedent. So that was the more or less the presentation on last time is we wanted to work with the applicants and really come to the planning commission with a request for a total exception, which is out of our precedent, but that was something that was
Yeah.
we, we had explored it one other time, previous parking exception. So now, which is why we're seeing two versus what would be four typically of a total parking 30%. Hopefully that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay. Not bad of me, thank you.
Cool. Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, we're, I will say we're generally very understanding of particularly with eating establishments, particularly around Main Street, anywhere, particularly with the new dispersed parking of there being availability of parking to serve the use. It's not like you're, you know, a restaurant, like a sit-down restaurant out up by one, like 313, that's not providing parking on site. Like it's, I think it's very different in that central commercial zone. Even though this would be C3, yeah. Here. And I think this is also very much in keeping with the many recent exceptions and fee and loos that we've recommended to council, so.
Yeah, frankly, well, as per our last meeting, I definitely think the two parking spaces being fee and lieu is closer in keeping with what we've held other business owners and two. I definitely like, I know I drive down that alley with some frequency. I know that plenty of people use it, and so it makes sense to credit those five spaces to the total parking that you guys need. And so I'm personally fully in support of requiring two to be fee and lieu and to have the remainder accepted. And that way, we can get on with this project because I, I think it's going to be a cool thing for the community. I love the idea of continuing to pull a bit more foot traffic from Main Street and a great use of the old Times building.
Yeah, with a nod to it still, which is very
The press is the solid name.
Great name.
Listen to any of our meetings in the last 10 years, you'll hear us talking about how much we need commercial kitchen space for, for rent and use in the community and like honestly, God bless you for including that in here. Like there are so many people that are going to be so excited about that because there have been businesses that have gone under because they were great businesses, maybe bakers, but they just could not make it work. Like space-wise access to that, so it's really cool. And yeah, it's a, it's a shocking large space. Where they have all those printing presses.
I know. It is until you start filling it in.
True, true. But it's also partitioned in such a way that it, it, it can be kind of different dedicated spaces, which is cool. It's not just one big open, you know, you walk in and it's obviously like this is the whole storefront. So it's cool, it's clever, I'm really excited.
Can I, oh, go ahead, yeah. Sorry, I just want to clarify one thing on the numbers, just to make sure I'm understanding correctly. I think we're at 11 minus five, and that was six, and 30% of that was two. Okay, I just heard nine and four, just wanted to make sure we have the same.
Yeah, then, yeah, you go for it.
Yeah, the nine number is the five that hopefully will be special exemption, but they're existing, plus the six that are necessary. And then of that six, two will be paying lieu.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Or was if those five didn't exist, we would be looking at a four fee and lieu versus a two.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Jill, do you have anything to add?
Sorry. No, I think we, we've had some great discussion over the last the last meeting about this, and we highly encourage them to come back with a, you know, a different plan. And I think this plan really fits exactly what we were talking about. And I think that the six spaces and the two to do the fee and lieu is great. I think it's a great compromise to kind of so that we're not changing the precedent that we'd already set. I too am excited to see a little eatery established in the Times. I've spent a lot of time in that building, so I think it's a great idea, and I really I'm very much into support of this. This is a good plan from the last meeting.
Yeah. Well, I think particularly like diversifying kind of what is an eating establishment in town, like with the the little, the little bitty guy that's going to be going in on Main Street, you know, in the very long alleyway. I think we need more, we need more grab and go, we need more sort of not traditional sit-down, you know, have a, you know, we, we need kind of a bit more options of things like that. And I do think that like Moss, Moss is already serving a huge I think niche in that part of town, which is cool. But I do think those kind of things, like a coffee place that isn't a drive-through, but also isn't somewhere that people are just going to post up with their laptops all day. You know, like some sort of thing like that. And the ability to have restaurant space that isn't always dedicated to something like that, that can be more of a flex space, I think is, is huge, would be really cool. Like you could have someone there for a month doing like a residency, like a restaurant pop-up for a week or two. And still like have the, the regular retail space to hopefully keep everything afloat, so that's cool. Super exciting. Yep.
Yeah, fully in support, so if we're ready, I'll make a motion.
Yeah. Go for it.
Awesome. I moved that the city Moab Planning Commission approved planning resolution number 06-2025. A planning resolution approving the parking special exemption request for nine parking, or for nine parking spaces, two fee and lieu and five special accepted that are located to the back of the building. Does that work?
No.
Because this, this motion for approval says nine, but we are, we are exempting nine, so.
Yeah, so has, has written it.
Exempting for nine.
Be good.
Let me say that again, I apologize. I moved that the city of Moab Planning Commission approved planning resolution number 06-2025. A planning resolution approving the parking special exemption request for nine parking spaces and the payment in lieu for two parking spaces for the press, eating and retail establishment. Change of use on property located at 35 East Center Street, Moab, Utah, 84532.
One.
Great, we have a motion from Miles, is there a second?
I'll go ahead and second that.
Okay, thank you Jill for the second. If there isn't further discussion or questions from the applicant, we can take a vote, all in favor of the motion on the table, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right.
Thank you so much, you guys, thank you for being so positive.
Oh my gosh, yeah. No, we're, we're, that's what we're here for, is to help you guys and help, help people make stuff work, so.
Thank you.
I'll see you when it opens.
Yeah.
That's really exciting. From it, you would have lost me if you were like, and Moss is leaving where they currently are. I'd be like, no, we won't let you.
I'm quick to.
I would have been pretty sad.
I was like Rebecca, that's on my way to work, this is very important.
Yeah, that's, I'm, I'm thrilled, that's going to be, that is such a needed thing. So thank you for doing something creative. I know it's a lot easier to do something.
And way to think outside the box.
Yeah.
A cool multi-use space and something that provides that commercial kitchen is going to be huge. Huge.
So exciting. Okay, that was our only action item for tonight. Our, our next item is a discussion item 5.1, a discussion on the draft Moab Water Shortage Response Plan. Hello, Alexi.
Hello. Okay, I'm gonna share my screen. This one, we're gonna just kind of go through the document. I'm interested in getting your feedback on it. Okay. So the city of Moab has to do a water conservation plan every five years. The city did one in 2021, and one of the things that was identified in there as an action item was a drought contingency plan or a drought response plan. We are pursuing that goal in a slightly different direction because a lot of our water supply in Moab is less affected by drought than it might be in locations that are getting water from a reservoir because we have springs and wells. So our water shortages might not come from drought, they might come from a pump malfunctioning or some sort of water contamination event. Hopefully those things don't happen, but we decided to make the plan broader to cover more of the kinds of things we might encounter that would create a water shortage. Now, if drought affected our wells and springs, this would also include that. Beyond that, I, I want to be really clear that this is meant as a short-term kind of more of a response to a specific issue with our water supply. It's not meant to be something to preserve the aqua for over a long term, that's handled in other plans. We've done a lot of different research and planning efforts targeted more at long-term water outlook. This is more of a very short-term, we have identified some specific problem that is going on that's creating an abnormal shortage of water. Okay, from there, we have, within this plan, five stages going from what we consider to be normal operations, is what we're doing right now all the time, to something that is more of an emergency situation where we have significantly less water available to people in town for some reason than we are planning or we would usually use at that time of year. The, there are a few principles in here. Though I worked with Mark Julis and Obie on this, Lisa's done some review, I've sent it to Lex to review. We have some more people who need to, and right now I just am hoping to get some feedback about whether we're heading the right direction with this. So the principles that we were working off of is that drinking, health, sanitation, fire protection, those things, life and safety issues are number one, uses of water, keeping people alive and healthy. And then moving down from there, staying within the available supply that we have, trying to make sure that we're serving all of the residents within the system. Once we get to things like landscape, preserving things that aren't going to bounce back, or would be extremely difficult to replace, like trees or shrubs, and then trying to work on voluntary and collaborative efforts first before getting into mandatory ones. This would likely require code changes if we got to that point. Those, I think, can be finalized once I have better direction from all of the parties involved, but it would eventually go into code. It probably would have to change the fee schedule for any kind of punitive enforcement that would happen after warnings. Okay, I'm gonna, we can, I can talk about definitions if we have questions, but I'm gonna skip those for now and then more or less go to what would initiate this and what it would entail if we did it. I, initiation would come from the utility services director noticing that what we are pumping and what we are using are not aligning. And then the city manager would then be able to initiate some stage of this water response or shortage response plan. When that situation stops, then we would go basically through that backwards and exit our water shortage response plan. It would not necessarily have to escalate from stage one to stage five. If we had something really bad happen, we could jump to the top, or maybe we would land in the middle. Maybe we would never escalate, it would just start at sort of a voluntary level of change before, and then if we didn't end up with a greater shortage, we would just go back to normal. So the triggers were meant to be again between that percentage of what kind of water we have available, which is usually much more than we use. And then going to, we're getting pretty close to even to we have less water available than we normally use. And with that, we have escalating scenarios and response actions that become increasingly mandatory instead of voluntary. We have some example scenarios in there. Obie is also going to work on putting together a formula that would more, you know, kind of explain what kinds of things would be knocked out that might create the situation. Like if we've lost a particular spring or well, it would be more detrimental than another. If this kind of thing lasted longer, then it's possible that we could bring a different water source online. We do have that option. It would take longer to get there though, so we might end up in some sort of conservation plan before we were able to bring on another water source. Okay, I the levels, everything during normal is as it would be on any given day now. And then as we move in, we start going into things that we would do more outreach about trying to get people to voluntarily save water. That would be an advisory, everything's voluntary. Going into warning, we would start limiting things that are aesthetic uses, like fountains or washing pavement with water, things like that, that aren't life safety issues can probably be delayed until we're over this water shortage. Then it goes into also private lawn watering, starting to limit the days of the week or how often people can do that. And then moving on to critical, more things become mandatory in emergency. So I'll stop there because mostly what we want to, I would like to get feedback on is whether this is heading the right direction, if these seem like appropriate actions, when we should be moving from voluntary to mandatory if we're hitting kind of the right levels for this. And then I think that there were also some other questions in the margins, like for example, evaporative cooling is a tricky one because it uses water, but it also could be a life safety issue depending on the time of year. And if you have any other broader concerns or ideas, that would be helpful as well.
Just trying to read sideways here. I feel like this is one of those things where doing even an informal community survey would be really helpful because I feel like us and then council and staff, obviously all have our things, and I obviously want to rely heavily on staff's expertise as far as what really is LOL, a drop in the bucket versus something that you know, or something that really is a major, a major draw, a major use. And, and certainly in the long run or at quantity, whatever it is, that would make a big impact if it was something that, you know, we want to have, we want to have the small, easy things that everyone can do. And then we also want to have the meaningful impactful ones as well. And I feel like that's where, you know, staff's expertise obviously comes in, but I'm curious. I think I'm curious to hear from the community too about things, not only what they think would be useful, but what they would be willing to do in those instances, I think is a really important question to ask too. And it seems like this is, you know, it's such a there's a lot of specific information, but while we're still at sort of the big picture phase of things. Yeah, I don't know.
My only thought is I do like the direction this is headed in, and I, one item on the list of actions that you would limit being lodging laundry. I, I guess the way I would put it is like, that makes a lot of sense to me, and I would almost go deeper there because my thought would be if we are experiencing like by the time we get to whatever it is, 95 to 85% of our water, like we've had multiple wells fail. I think for however long it takes us to get the wells back online or otherwise, it would be most appropriate to prioritize like the people that live here and the existing infrastructure. You know, making sure that You know, making sure that like.
Yep.
People's whole yards don't die or they don't go without water for their swamp cooler or whatever it happens to be over like. You know, if we had such a crisis, telling people like, hey, it'd probably be best to stay in Monticello for the week. While we get this pump back online would make the most sense to me over restricting. Or significantly restricting the locals' ability to like function in this town.
Yeah.
Um, so obviously not really at the advisory or warning stage because tourism is a big thing and the money coming in from it is still a big thing and we want people here. But if we really are in like genuine civic crisis mode. Sometimes some of the biggest draw on our city is not the residents themselves, but the sheer amount of. Tourism that can be here at one given time using water and otherwise.
Yeah.
And I think while it'd be a hard call to make, at the point we are genuinely experiencing a citywide emergency. Prioritizing us and the people who are, who are stuck here, so to speak. Over the people traveling through makes a lot of sense to me.
Yeah, and I think it, it makes, I, I would almost with the lodging laundry, I almost think of it in two ways, like doing it period and then doing what. I'm sure having not stayed in a hotel in Moab, ever, probably, um, after I moved here. What, what a lot are doing now and frankly, what a lot are likely doing because of staffing shortages is just having something in the room that says like, hey. Unless you specifically request it, nobody's gonna be coming in and collecting your towels every day and doing your laundry for you. Um, I feel like that's becoming normal practice when it used to be every single room, if you didn't tell them not to. Would come and get like a refresh of linens every day.
Um, I think luckily a lot of the people who offer lodging, whether it's the large corporations or, you know, smaller people doing Airbnb's or otherwise. Are pretty aware of the fact that we live in the desert and they're kind of already at that stage.
Yeah.
Which is.
When I do, I think it's a, I think it's a staffing issue as much as everything. There, there isn't housekeeping staff to, to do that for every room every day anymore. Um, but yeah, I think like, you know, splitting that up, I think, I think that it, I'm looking at the priority list, yeah.
Yeah.
I think having food bearing plants at the very bottom of that list is very important. I think that's something that. Particularly in a time of crisis or subsistence, that is not something that we're gonna be telling people. Oh, P S, we're in a drought and things are really bad. Also stop growing your food, like, I, I just don't think that would fly.
And to some degree, somewhere in here, I said it, I, we're prioritizing like shrubs and trees. Over like grass and that kind of thing. And I almost think that, that distinction could be like annuals versus perennials. Like any kind of flower box watering or otherwise, like something you can bring back next year and it will be just as lush as it was. If we have the water for it, is something that we can, we can afford to lose. But something like a large tree or something that will take years to reestablish if it dies is something that could be. Higher up the priority list and, and less likely to lose water in like an advisory or warning kind of situation.
Yeah, I would almost just have like a community survey that just had like rank these in order of priority.
Yeah, like how.
Because I feel like that will, frankly, I feel like it will help bolster what you've already put, um, as far as the priority list. I think, I think it would be, end up being very close to this, if not the same. Um. But yeah, I mean, aesthetic uses and the other thing is, and again, you know quantity better than anyone, but. It, things that are like comfort things, I feel like to me in my brain that goes with aesthetic uses, like sprayers. Outside your restaurant, on the patio eating area or at the food truck park or wherever it is, I feel like that is. That's a, that's a sizable use of water, um, if you're doing that for many, many hours during business hours a day. Um, in the heat of the summer and I do understand the like, that is a part of the business, but I feel like if you're. If you're telling people that they might have to. Let their, you know, shrubs on their property die. Same with the reason Miles was saying, I feel like we can like. You know, buck up a bit, sitting at an outdoor patio seating area at a restaurant in town, primarily business. Um. So maybe even pulling that out, cause there, there is substantial number of businesses that do that. Um, but again, I don't know how much that is in the grand scheme and I don't want us to. Like nitpick in a way that's not gonna actually result in a substantial, um, benefit.
I also think there's like.
If they have one big hit, that's gonna be really impactful almost. One particular kind of use that everyone hates. If we get to that point, rather than have it be a million little things that at the end of the day won't add up to as much as that one.
Yeah, that is part of the reason why like indoor access, like flushing toilets is, it's in here, but we were kinda like. Do, I mean, do you, do you wanna nitpick about how often somebody's flushing their toilet when we know a lot of their water is watering plant life? Um, not to say that if we got to that point, you shouldn't pay attention to every bit of water you're using.
Yeah.
Yeah, part of me thinks that like, maybe somewhere in the morning world and somewhere between critical and emergency, there are like. Two emergent lines and it's like to me, small reductions or otherwise, but once you're asking people to kill their landscaping. You know, grass is one thing, comes back next year, but once you're like, you can't water your trees, it's that bad, then like things like. Uh, lodging and or that kind of thing should start to go away as well. Because if we're asking locals to kill their yards, then we're really at a point where we're really trying to save water. And then somewhere in the emergency world, there's another line that's like, if we are really going to restrict so many things. If it's really so bad, it should be down to truly essential things. And at that point, then there's like the flushing of toilets or otherwise, that if it is so bad where we're, you know. Uh, where we need to be like managing water or, you know, I'm not sure. Like, I know California's done things where they turn people's water off for a period of time in the day and then turn it back on. Um, and that's terrifying, but the thought is like, if we really are down to like, we need water for drinking. And swamp coolers so that people don't get heat stroke, but otherwise, nothing, then at that point like. Uh, I think there's an emergent line there of like extreme emergency that could essentially be addressed.
Totally.
Um, yeah.
And, I mean, I imagine this mirrors sort of the similar priority list. That other drought prone places or places that do have significant regulations already on the daily. Like in California and Nevada and Arizona, um, like not only have these, but it's like, no, you are not allowed to have grass. And you cannot water it, you know, those kind of places. I imagine this is fairly similar to their priority list.
Yeah, this is based off of a number of similar drought water shortage response plan type efforts. We didn't go into long-term landscaping and things like that because this is intended to be a short-term kind of plan.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, no, I think that would be, yeah, like, this all makes sense for an acute situation. Where wells go down and we know like, within X amount of time, within a month, we will have this operational again and we can go back to normal. Versus if it was gonna be six months, then this could start affecting businesses or otherwise, like it's fine to say, hey, you can't spray, you know, water. Or you can't do the misters around your business, which might cut down on your patronage. But it's only for three weeks while we get this fixed versus like if it's gonna be six months, these asks become bigger of folks in the community.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And I do think everything inherently does become easier, uh, because it would be a. A time-restricted emergency, like everyone knows, it's not just like, hey, P S, these are the new standards and you can't do these things anymore. Which is why I almost think like, what are the, what are the risks to long-term things? From not having water access and it is obviously plants and trees, um. You know, if you're not able to water your garden for three weeks in July, it's done. It's like done, done.
Yeah.
So, and that's not just a short-term thing, the way like patrons not having misters is or not being able to do as much laundry at your business. Um, so I think that's a, and I think that obviously you've taken that into consideration too. Um, yeah.
Okay, so I'm hearing possibly dial back on the lodging laundry as we get into the emergency, a little maybe. A little more steeply beforehand, because by the time we get to emergency, we are saying, just don't water your vegetation anymore. So at that point, we'd like to also address, because right now all the lodging laundry is saying is that you can only wash it. If it's requested by guests, but we couldn't possibly consider moving that into like a earlier stage.
Yeah.
Okay.
But also I feel like looking at the way that you've made the. Instructions for non-food plants. That's not let your stuff die prohibitive, it's, this is inconvenient. Um, it's saying, it's basically saying, don't use sprinklers, don't do things that waste water. And I know we probably. Because of Western law would not be able to limit like flood irrigation schedules, but like, gosh, that's such a big one too. Um, for people that aren't agricultural uses who do have that particular method, but I know that's another thing.
Yeah, and this focuses on culinary water.
Yep.
Yeah, cause I was gonna say, if that's surface water and it's like a well that goes down, cause we're in a weird.
Yeah, it's well.
Situation like you mentioned where it's like, this is not because our reservoir has dried up and nobody has water access. It's because we don't have access to culinary water.
Mm-hmm.
And that makes it a weirder balance, I guess. And, but at the same time, almost better because we're, it would be such an acute situation, like a well malfunctioning and needing to be fixed. Is something that would become a priority and get done quickly versus if your reservoir dries up, you're waiting till next season or you're waiting for rain or, you know.
Mm-hmm.
And it's also hard too, because all of these things, while they are using culinary water, they, especially watering plants. Like it's also replenishing the river too, so it's this kind of like, granted that takes a lot longer, but, um. Yeah, I think, I think this makes sense. Um, I do appreciate how it's written that it's, you know, you can only water between certain hours. And only specific methods. It's basically saying, hey, P S, you can't run your sprinkler at five P M. Cool.
I have a weird thing that might be interesting. Um, I wonder if we could say in regards to sprinklers or anywhere where you could have a gray water system established. That gray water would remain unrestricted while culinary water would be restricted. In such a way that it would encourage folks, especially places that have like large lawns. And maybe the funds to arrange for a gray wa- gray water situation, cause I think in general, the community, community trending towards using gray water. To water lawns and stuff like that would be advantageous. So if they didn't want to potentially be restricted in their watering schedules or otherwise, if they're using gray water, then they're not. They're not impeding on our ability to provide culinary water to others in the community. And so they wouldn't be restricted or that restriction would come much later and much, you know, like further down in the emergency. And making that kind of little caveat would give people the option of, if they really wanna make sure they don't ever have to worry about watering their lawn. The step of going to gray water would be a step in the right direction for them and kind of encouraging that.
The same way if you're on Gwissa, you wouldn't have to worry about it.
Mm-hmm.
Essentially, like if you're on secondary water already, this doesn't apply to you. They, obviously they have their whole own thing, which.
Mm-hmm.
Confuses me, but, um, Luke is here though and he can answer our questions about Gwissa. But how this all, how this would work in that context, that's a different discussion though. Um. But yeah, I think, and it's nice too to have carrot stick, um, with things like this, like obviously this isn't restrictions that are gonna. Be in place all the time. It would only be in these specific situations, but it's nice to give people a, hey, if you don't, if you're worried about this. Here's a way that you can make sure that this doesn't apply to you. I think it's nice, it could maybe be a little extra push.
Yeah.
Which is great.
Yeah.
Incentives over restrictions.
Yeah, and it's just nice to offer people an option if they are really concerned about the potential of this occurring and not being able to maintain some of their more aesthetic uses. That if those are hooked up to gray water, it's an option for them.
Mm-hmm. Okay, um, I have notes on laundry, uh, public survey or feedback. Uh, unrestricted gray water, adding that in there, maybe refining some of the references to trees or shrubs or annuals, perennials. Um, and addressing misters also.
Yeah.
And Jill just stepped away from the camera, I was gonna see if we had any.
Any other.
Jill, are you still there? Oh, yes, she is. We see you.
Yeah, sorry, I was just adjusting the curtain.
No, that's okay.
Sun, the sun is moving. So, yeah, yeah, I totally agree with all the comments. Um, yeah, I, I agree. If it got to a certain point where we're worried about lodging laundry, then we've got bigger issues, so. Um, but yeah, so, so, yeah, I, I was listening to that. Place that had the Hurricane Helene and one lady was on today and she said she was without lo- or water at her house for two months. So, um, you know, so if we get to lodging laundry, we, we got other problems, so, yeah. But I like the idea of giving a public input on this. Maybe, maybe they have some other ideas too of what shouldn't be used, so.
Yeah, and, and to the car, I feel like the city is not really, really good about this. I think the framing is very important of that. Not like, hey, what are you guys willing to give up? Because I'm sure that is.
Right?
Immediately how it will be read and then complained about loudly on social media.
Yeah, of course.
But like, hey, in a real emergency situation, what would you rather?
Like have or not have.
Restriction on, you know, what would inconvenience you the most? What's, what's like a no way for you? I feel like that. Like, pick your top five things you wanna keep in an emergency water situation or something like that.
Yeah, I'll talk to Lisa about trying to be sure that it's not lost in communication, that this is. More or less, uh, escalating emergency kind of situations where we are in some way having less water available to us. Than we are using as opposed to long-term conservation type.
This is not some secret new ordinance that the city is planning to try to, no.
No.
I, someone will still think that, but what we, whatever we can do with, with the, the people that will actually read it. Uh, to, to prevent that, that'd be great.
So, I don't wanna interject out of place if we're gonna continue, but, uh, knowing where we're at in the track, I was hoping that we could talk a little bit about. Maybe not policy, um, approval, but kind of into the implementation realm, just not exercise realm, the implementation realm. On a few points there, I don't know if we were gonna touch on that.
The implementation in terms of what would need to happen for.
Yeah, I guess, um. Short anecdote, I was in a location where there was a zero day in a month and what that meant it was, there was, they were gonna basically shut the water off. For all non-essential services. And so it had been in an exposure of practices and escalating practices like this, so I got to kinda see it firsthand a bit. And the greatest thing, and I think we're touching on that, is from a visitation standpoint, was kinda where I'm going with this. Is we're gonna have to have a massive educational realm prior to this emergency of knowing how this will be implemented at these escalating rails. But also incoming, especially in the non-critical realm, emergency or, um, lower threats. We're still gonna be operating, but to prevent that from escalating further is a massive educational piece, um, and saying, so. How we might work with our business owners, private property owners to have materials, for lack of a better word. That can help explain this in a very palatable, sometimes even multilingual way. Um, so that it can be expressed, here's, here, hey, we're, we're in a bad spot, please do these things. Um, because I guess from an enforcement perspective, that's a whole nother piece of this that we'll have to handle. Okay, how are we actually out there, can we say mandating these things? That's a different conversation, but I think elective participation on the mandatory elements. Is the biggest, will be the, the biggest turning point, whether this is successful or not. Or the increasing, um, levels of emergency will be ba- based on that. Cause in theory, if you're performing well, that threat will remain or even decrease. Uh, so that's, we don't have to talk about all tonight, but just wanted to plug it into this thought process of, once we have this policy set. And, and, and building this policy, I think it will be just as important, if not built into the policy, how it will be implemented. Not exercised, but implemented.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, right now we do have lists of people and types of outreach. But we don't have, let's say, specific outreach that would go out at a different, you know, levels or things like that. We could consider having some ready-made designs or things like that. I have seen that in another plan that, I mean. The plan was very similar to almost like handouts of like, here's what we're doing right now. And in some ways, if we were getting into a position where we did have a water shortage, we might wanna be that prepared.
Mm-hmm.
That we're not working on graphic design. That we're not working on graphic design when we need to tell people to stop using water.
Yeah, that's kind of my thought is somebody's showing up to the hotel and today is critical day, all six, well, you know, well, six, everything is down.
Yeah.
How are we doing that behavior? Because the outreach will be, will be in a much different emergency state, dealing with a lot of different things. That having a pamphlet in a, inside the hotel room and explain to that person what they're walking into, we're not gonna have time for that. It will have to have already been basically a, a prepackaged bundle we give to each, in this case, maybe say we, you know, overnight accommodations, they have their emergency shortage bundles. Here's all the signs you want. Here's all the instructions you're gonna want to have. It'll be ready to roll out. Um, is that's, I guess, directly what I'm saying, when I was in these locations, I, there was information everywhere on how to perform throughout the city. It was, it was down to a month, so it was fairly severe of the conservation efforts in that place. Um, but yeah, the hope is that we're never, we're never there. Like, like you said, hopefully we're never there, but let's sense this as a preparedness plan. Let's plan for that.
I also do think that's a really fair point about education could help prevent escalation. So essentially, if, because some of these first levels are also voluntary, making sure that people understand the severity that is still warning and are more inclined to opt into the voluntary w- water savings, knowing that it would prevent them from at like later on being forced with mandatory water savings. I think would be a really good, like, having easy, ready-made access to educational tools in that regard would be a really big step. Because if people are kind of, oh, it's not that bad, it's, you know, whatever, and then it continues to get worse, we, you know, lose a couple pumps and that puts extra stress on other pumps. And then one of those picks that day to give up the ghost, you know, then, uh, if we can prevent that and kind of get a jump on saving water before we hit the more aggressive stages of enforcement. Um, I think that would be just more like, as a citizen in the community, that would be more palatable for me to be approached with like, hey, this could be this bad. Here's all the things you can do to prevent it from being this bad versus kind of like thinking, oh, it's not that bad, whatever, it's gonna be fine. And then being faced with like, oh, I can't water my plants. I can't, you know, like, um, even my trees, I have to like watch die because we just don't have the water. Um, I'd rather that be kind of front-loaded.
I think, and that's what, I gotta plug, one more thing anecdotal is that's exactly what I have observed and feel, entertain this kind of two fableistic things is you're, you're combating the tragedy of the commons, which is, well, I can conserve, but they're not gonna, so why am I? As well as kind of a slow burn, slow boil consequence of, you're gonna get really used to doing very low level conservation. So when the increases come, you're gonna kind of treat it with a certain amount of apathy. That's what I observed. It's, it's, it will happen depending on how that approaches. So I think not obviously saying, you know, the sky is falling. It's like, well, we're not really, we're, we're, we're okay. We're just at low warning stage. Um, but having the community at least understanding that through whether it's education or at least the way we're designing the materials. It, it, it can get scary real quick, especially with water, especially in the desert. So.
And at some point in the really scary realm, water becomes a, a significant health and safety concern. You know, if it really is short, then, you know, people need to be able to cool their homes and people need to be able to access clean drinking water.
Yeah.
And I mean, it seems almost silly, but this is an emergency preparedness. So, you know, it is something that needs to be addressed and thought about.
Well, and then the incremental steps leading up, the, the idea also being the hope that if we're at like a low warning stage, the, the the point is to prevent the higher warning stage. So everyone participate now, not only are you getting used to the smaller measures, but it's like, if everyone does this, there's a likelihood that we could not get to the higher, but the ideal is that we don't get to the higher place. So it's like, do this now or, or else unfortunately. But, but I, I think it's really great that this is something that we're on top of. Um, anytime we're, we're ahead of these things happening, I think is really great. Um, so.
Okay, I will also work on that. Um, I'll scroll, scroll through the bottom of this just to kind of finish this up. But we have some exemptions for things, again, life, safety kinds of stuff. Um, a process for somebody to be able to ask for something that's not on our list. And then enforcement, we're still working on. I feel like this is pretty draft as far as what it would be. It's more like a direction um, of notifying people and then notifying people and then starting with fines or in an extreme situation restricting the flow to their property. If they have continued to violate the, um, whatever stage we're in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the, it's a breathalyzer on your car. Through your yard.
Yeah.
We asked, we asked really nicely, we told you to stop.
Yeah.
Okay, we're just gonna restrict that. Got a ticket and you cannot be trusted right now. Yeah, enforcement, of course, always being the giant elephant in the room.
Okay, I think that's all really helpful.
This is, it means incredible shape. You have done a really good job so far. So thank you.
All right, I will work on that and then I, I don't have a timeline for when you'll see this again, but you will.
Cool. Um, thank you. Uh, all right, uh, our next item is five point two, a discussion on the framing of an E V readiness ordinance. Briefing and discussion. Again, sad that Carolyn could not be here tonight for this conversation, as I know she has a world of expertise in these kind of things, but she did, um, send along via email some great resources and things for us to consider and look at. So hopefully we can bring those into the, the conversation tonight. Bye you guys.
Uh, yes, um, and I think the way this is set up is we're gonna do a little bit of review. We talked about this in August and then I you had some requests at that meeting, so I have a little bit more information and then we'll see where the discussion goes from there.
Cool.
Uh, okay. So reminder, the reason we're doing this is because we have greenhouse gas reduction goals. And in our greenhouse gas inventory, a, this is actually pulling out the interstate and one ninety-one. So some of that is actually in town and not included in this. It's just the function of how we collected data that we can either put the street in or not. So it's probably more than twenty-nine percent, but it's somewhere around twenty-nine percent of our greenhouse gases are from transportation. And a lot of that is the sort of things that cities don't get involved in, like which car are you buying? Um, but there are options for trying to make it easier for people to choose low emission vehicles. And that's one of the reasons we're talking about E V readiness. Uh, I will add that a low proportion or a low percentage of people currently are driving electric vehicles in Grand County. Um, so I'm going to how these save emissions. Um, there's a lot of different kinds of cars. Uh, battery electric vehicles and plug-in hybrid vehicles generally have lower emissions. They run on, at least partially on electricity. Uh, even with the current grid, uh, mix that we have coming from Rocky Mountain Power in a lot of ways or in a lot of situations, these are lower emissions than vehicles that run on gasoline. And as we join the Utah renewable communities and a hundred percent of our electricity is renewable, cars that are electric will also then be running on a hundred percent renewable electricity. So it helps us meet the goal of eighty percent reduction in emissions. That percentage that's from transportation, um, would be addressed by trying to make it easier for people to use E Vs. Uh, okay, one of the things we talked about last time was who could be driving an E V, because there are some really expensive options out there. Uh, the price of E Vs has been coming down over time. Uh, and it's possible, um, depending on a lot of things that we can't really predict. Uh, the E Vs in this trajectory that they've been in could be the same as a combustion engine vehicle by twenty twenty-nine for upfront costs. And they're in the neighborhood currently, although slightly more expensive. And then when, uh, lifecycle costs, some E Vs are already lower. If you look at the cost of owning a car over the entire life, because at that point you're taking out gas that you're not buying because you're buying electricity, which is cheaper. Uh, and maintenance on E Vs is typically less than it is on an internal combustion engine or gas-run car. So here we have, um, in blue and red, both are E V options, a Kia Niro and the Hyundai Kona. They're just examples of vehicles that are electric. And then the next three, uh, are all gasoline-run vehicles. So you can see that they're coming out somewhere in the vicinity over lifetime costs and sometimes less expensive over the life of a car to have an E V. Uh, there are obviously other considerations about the range and what your purpose is for the vehicle, about whether it's feasible. Okay, uh, practicality of charging, about eighty percent of E V charging happens at people's homes. And in Moab, about fifty-eight, fifty-eight point five percent of housing is owner occupied, that the rest is occupied by non-owners. Or some percentage of both of those is not occupied uh, at all. But, uh, essentially, a lot of people don't have a lot of control over what kinds of housing they're in and whether they would have the option to charge. So part of making E Vs accessible to people is that they would have this option to charge at home or be able to find housing where they could. And adding it is really expensive. Uh, so charging, if you can't do it at home, it's a barrier to owning an E V. And also adding charging can be a barrier to E Vs. Um, the green sections on this graph are the differences between installing it upfront versus going in for a retrofit. So it's substantially more expensive if you want to go in and add E V charging after the fact.
Which was Carolyn's biggest point, I think, in the email, obviously she sent to you as well. Um, yeah, that retrofitting is a di- a whole different game than
Yeah. Yeah, uh, right. And then also even finding the location can be hard. Um.
Frankly, looking at those numbers, they feel a little low. For what it would actually genuinely take for you to run an E V charging port in a forty-year-old home here in Moab. Uh, cause half the time, just either breaker boxers are not outfitted to have that much capacity. And so it's not just about finding a way to route wire through the home and install something in the garage that can support E V charging. But it's about upgrading the electrical system in a lot of the home and then maybe a new service panel or otherwise, before you can even get to the cost of running new wire, Romex and having a, you know, two twenty volt outlet.
Mm-hmm.
I might add that's by, kind of the concept of use type for a same-time wheel. Imagine a parking lot, you'd have to tear up all that asphalt, repair. Any of those types of that, which we're gonna get to a little bit later, I'm sure, but, um, yeah.
And that's what is in here.
Yeah, okay, it is.
Yeah, this, this cost, um, is, is like for a twenty-four vehicle parking lot. So it's not like, what if you have to replace the transformer for your neighborhood because you added E Vs charging? Um, so the, right, this is a limited scope or scenario of what, where you might, but essentially it's a lot more expensive. And it could be even worse depending on your situation. Uh, for conversation purposes, uh, we have different levels of preparation for E V readiness or E V charging. E V capable would just be that there's conduit available there that you could uh, add electric later, like a line that would still possibly involve upgrading your electrical service or other things. It would just have the ability not to tear up the parking lot or whatever, uh, to be able to put that in. There would be a place for it. E V ready would have electrical included as well. It's the equivalent of a tw- forty volt, uh, outlet. Um, it would not be something that you would directly charge your car in probably, but you could add a charger to it if you wanted. And then E V installed is actually being able to charge your car from an E V charger. Um, so you asked to look at incentives. Um, we, I did, uh, Utah Clean Energy helped us with this and did some research on different kinds of incentives. Some of these are broader than something that would be specifically for E Vs, like green building codes, which Utah has different kinds of restrictions on building codes, so not all of that would be possible. And it also means that sometimes the scale is like a hmm, for example, being able to increase the building elevation is probably a really big bonus for having an E V charger. Um, and in the case of Boise, which is one of the place where this particular one was, uh, they had different zones that were appropriate for some of these incentives. And there are things that maybe we don't have exactly equivalents to, because we're a smaller town, we don't have like a built-up, uh, high-density downtown area with transit at the same service level that you would get in the city. Okay, so expediting permits is, um, the first one here. Parking requirements, reducing parking, I think some of these definitely have some challenges in Moab, but they are possibilities other cities have used. Uh, increasing building density, uh, or the availability of that for maybe doing some green energy or green building options. I guess this would be like stretch code level. Uh, monetary, like having refunds on building permits or a rebate that is an option for somebody who installs one of these. Uh, Rocky Mountain Power used to have incentives, but their website currently says they're reevaluating them uh, for E V installations. And then the increased building elevation. So those are some of the ones that have been used by other cities. And then I also looked into other ways of getting E V readiness. So this is from a report about E V readiness and rentals from the Urban Sustainability Directors Network. They talked about a few different options. Right-of-way charging would be like city-provided charging in residential areas and right-of-ways. Um, for people to do street parking, they would be available to anybody if that were to happen. Um, and then they probably would cost more than regular electricity, uh, because it would have to be networked and, and all of those things. Uh, multi-use parking arrangements would be something similar, but working on agreements with private properties that are in residential areas that might want to provide E V charging in their off-hours. Voluntary E V, uh, charging equipment additions would be mostly having people do this on a voluntary basis, like have some sort of, it, more of a request and then people would install it if they want. Requesting utility investment in E V S C, we have had some of this already for a long time. Rocky Mountain Power at their building had E V chargers that were available. And now we also have the ones in Lyons Park that is partly through our utility, although they're not necessarily accessible residentially, like for somebody who wants to charge at home. And code updates, which is, uh, what we discussed at the first meeting and what, um, we were considering as staff is one option for having E V readiness come in in your housing. Uh, with that, I'll, uh, I guess, stop to say I want to leave this open to what you want to talk about, because I know that you wanted us to come back and you were concerned about the cost of this to developers. So we can continue from here with whichever piece of it you're interested in, if any.
Yeah, I think I'm still, I'm definitely still concerned about the cost. You know, the city council recent, like, just increased impact fees as well, which I do think is something that needed to happen, but you know, just the slow, the slow creep of added costs that of course all get passed on to buyer or renter or whomever the project is being built for, um, and doing what we can on the regulatory side to not add to the burden that is already an insane market with crazy interest rates. Um, so I think that's, that, that is my primary concern. I think that would be the primary concern of the community at large, um, of, of builders and developers. Um, I think the ins- an incentive-based approach, like a like a really good incentive-based approach. I think particularly because things are expensive, developers are also looking for ways to decrease long-term costs. Um, and so if there are things that we could do, that would actually make a significant impact to to offset something or offer things up to, to really have this be a part of somebody's development plan. I think what's nice is when you do that for a while, you, a couple years of great incentives and people realizing, oh, this isn't as difficult as we thought it was. It does sort of become the standard and becomes the norm. And then it is easier to be like, and then long-term, our plan is to make, make this something that's gonna be a standard for, for new development. Get in now while the offer's on the table to get some stuff out of it, I think financially. Um, obviously density is a, a huge bonus. We have building height parking requirements, sort of the obvious, the obvious things, which are all there.
I, yeah, I specifically really like the idea of parking requirements. And maybe it's just because we've seen a lot of parking exemptions come forward lately, but the idea that like if you're facing a fee-in lieu and you're gonna have to pay for parking spaces anyways, that you could choose to make the addition of a charging station at your business. Um, and of course, it would have to be appropriate. And of course, it would have to be appropriate in the space, like you can't choose to put one in on the downtown dispersed parking, even though that's kind of what you're using for your, just like for that. But if you, you know, were hitting a point with your lot where you didn't have enough room on the lot to provide the parking that you use required, but instead you could install EV charging and that would earn you a few spots or whatever and get you within compliance. I think that's an interesting tool and I think providing people options in the parking world, because we talked about like bikes and whether or not you could have bike racks count for a parking space or something like that. I think it might feel more meaningful than just paying a fee that we know at some point will help improve parking further in Moab. That if we are really interested in seeing more EV readiness and EV chargers, that providing that option could bring, bring that into the fold. And then my thought, there are two things that I kind of wonder. And one is from a commercial perspective, when you're building a parking lot, you're often already running conduit and electrical to light posts and bollards or whatever else it happens to be. So I think the expense of running slightly larger conduit that you could pull EV charging, you know, wire capable of servicing an EV charging unit through and then and, and this is only in discussion of the new build or a major overhaul. You know, I think at some point we could start either offering a significant incentive or requiring some amount of that, even if it's just that the minimum conduit size in a parking lot could be X amount. You don't have to pull the wire through it if you don't want to, but you have to provide conduit that has enough space. Because to me, in a large building project like that, the cost of inch and a half versus two and a half inch conduit wouldn't be that significant.
Corey, you I don't think I'm gonna make a full comment, other than I think you're heading right where we're gonna go. So I appreciate those comments because that, I think from a staff perspective, again, we were bringing this to you, again, understanding the implications that adding regulations in this time, not just from our local situation with our, our current increases, but also from the state and holistic perspective, it's, it's a hard time to be asking for more. That being said, I think kind of where Alexi started off, there's a reason that I think staff is bringing this to you in this moment is to address goals that have been approved for us to really go out and start resolving, so. I think it's gonna be your very tough challenge to navigate how to accomplish those goals through what mechanisms or what would be, in this case, maybe partial or incremental options. So that being said, I think, I think we're on the right track. But I do, yeah, I think Lexi's team us up with this next slide of where we might be going.
Yeah.
We jumped the gun.
No, no, no. Well, I didn't want to jump the gun because if it was, if we were having a similar conversation to last time where you're like, well, I just don't think that's what we're ready for yet. I don't want to keep giving unwanted information. So some of the things that I'm interested in, and then I'll also show you one of the things that staff discussed. So we, some of the questions I'm interested in are where are we prioritizing this? Because there are different zones, there's different kinds of needs in different locations. Where we're doing that, what level of readiness is appropriate? So possibly it's just having the conduit there, like EV capable. And then mechanisms like incentives versus code updates. And then I think new construction and major renovations that are appropriate for an electrical upgrade is sort of what you've said, and I think that was maybe even, I mean, that's where we as staff too. Like we, this isn't something that we want to necessarily come in and have people who are, I don't know, remodeling a bathroom, having to put EV chargers in or something.
No.
That being said, in new construction on a residential perspective, having a forty or fifty amp access in or near the parking, the garage, whatever it happens to be, can be useful for a multiple of reasons. And so, you know, code will tell you how many outlets you have to have per counter space in a kitchen. And it doesn't seem insane to me to think that an outlet with that kind of capability could be required going forward. And then from another perspective, not so much requirement, but going back to what Kaia said, there are plenty of reasons outside of EV readiness to have that outlet installed retroactively in your home. And some amount of incentive to say like, hey, you know, if you want to go ahead and install this, whether it's to plug in your RV or whether it's to plug in your EV. So that was my turn to make my own comment. That there could be some kind of incentive to defray the cost, whether it's forgiving permitting fees or, you know, something the city could take on without a, a big hit or something like partnering with Rocky Mountain to offer a real like incentive to defray the cost of that could make that more reasonable for more people. Especially in my mind, that would work in the scenario of someone is a long-term renter and would really like the ability to plug something into a fifty amp outlet. But that's still a fairly large ask for a homeowner, so if that homeowner is amenable to that kind of thing, like how can we make it just a little bit easier on them to do the thing that we would like to see in our community?
Well, I think this coveting in the context of other upgrades is important too. So my house is EV ready, but it's because we had solar panels put on and we had them do it in the course of that. Not in the bill, even though it's a fairly new build through Hsu, like that wasn't a thing at the time, but when we had solar panels put on, it was again, much cheaper to just go ahead and do that thing, like someday we're gonna have an electric vehicle, you know, so, and, and then like my brother could park his, like plug his RV into it when he visits.
Yeah.
So so I think also framing it that way, like this is not, you know, we're not, again, we're not saying you're updating your bathroom and therefore you have to put an EV ready spot in your, on the outside of your house in your carport or whatever, but it's like this, this does make very great sense in the context of other energy efficient upgrades in particular. Especially if it's like, it's the same people doing it. It's the same exact people who put solar panels on your house that can quit.
Any idea too, that if your, if your life is going to be upset by the whole process of a work crew being in your home, doing things, installing things, that if you were ready to go ahead and make that leap, that if there was a way to either expedite the process or defray the cost that the city could do without, I mean, I know we rely on permitting fees, but if there was some amount of reduction there or something to say like, hey, we'll make this a little easier on you if you do this along with what you're already doing.
Or rebates or
Rebates or, yeah, I mean, I don't know exactly how that would go, but.
Yeah, I think, I think the where is obviously the most important question and I do think this should be a in the grand scheme of new development, this is not that much, particularly if it's a small number of units. I think it makes great sense for multifamily residential. I think there, you know, there is a reason that they have EV chargers at multi-flats because it kind of is in keeping with the design of the apartment or of the, the houses in the first place. I think they have, yeah, they have EV chargers, but I think so. Yeah, and that's the thing, this is, I think it would be really exciting for developers that are already doing this to also have some sort of incentive to do it too, like, oh, cool, this is something I was already doing because there's a market for it. But it's nice if, if, you know, we're sort of giving a little bit to, but I think multifamily, single-family residential, I think is always going to be a really difficult sell because that is such a highly personal decision. Like, you know, you're building your house with the intent for you to live in it and if you don't want an EV charger.
And you shouldn't, you shouldn't have to.
Yeah, I think multifamily residential, it does make sense though, because it is in keeping with with allowing multifamily residential to downsize with parking requirements are, I think that would be a huge one. Particularly with ample street parking that we have in town, we've already talked about decreasing those. So I think, you know, what is more expensive, having to take precious land space for parking spaces that could be used for another unit? Or putting an EV, like infrastructure in, I think it's probably it's same, same with commercial, honestly, like I think if you get more floor space for putting EV readiness or, or heights, that's obviously our biggest carrot when it comes to commercial space and multifamily residential, frankly.
Well, in part of me, so I was curious, we touched on this for just a brief moment, I'm trying to make sure I understand. There was also incentives offered by other municipalities where during the down, their downtime, like commercial establishments were allowing people to charge in their parking lots or otherwise, or incentivized to do that. I really liked that idea and to me, I, if there was a way to work that out, because installing them in public spaces, like a long right of way, so the people who use the right of way street parking. Like, that's a lot of money for the city to spend for what is currently still a fairly small group of users. But if, again, there was an incentive program with businesses where that cost is being absorbed by business, but they are getting something out of one, installing these EV chargers and two, allowing them to be used in off time. Obviously, we don't have a lot of like huge office buildings here that would let people charge overnight.
There's a Walmart parking lot.
Yeah, exactly. There's no like large, large box store parking lot, but at the same time, even like hotels in off season or, you know, like anything that has a large parking area, they would be willing to install a couple more. But would get an incentive for that because they're letting Moab locals charge during the night or something like that, restaurant parking or something. I think that's a really interesting thing because essentially you're gaining charging for the public, but you're not having to spend the city's budget on actually installing the EV chargers. And I kind of like that.
Another thing that, and please redirect me if this is too soon in the conversation for that, but another thing that Carolyn mentioned was in her email was about capacity and that you can have the infrastructure to be ready, but the reality is we have power outages all the time. Those are caused by things like wind and power lines going down, not because of overload
Right.
on our grid, but that is something to consider too. It's like we can be physical, like physically ready for all of that EV charging, but are we capacity ready for all of that EV charging? And that was just something that I know she had mentioned in her email was, was a major consideration that sometimes gets missed.
Yeah. And it was a consideration. So as staff, we were talking about what, what might be possible and coming up with any kind of recommendation for what would be appropriate in Moab, we were focusing on multifamily residential because they have the least control over what they have access to for charging. And then trying to figure out like the right level of if they don't have people using it, then we probably don't need EV installed yet. And then if you're trying to figure out that capacity issue, one of the things in the article that Carolyn sent was talking about different kinds of load management, kind of a smart, kind of electricity management software or availability. And the idea of that was to not require somebody to do forty amps for every single stall. But to have some sort of formula that provides enough electricity that there can be load sharing between different ones without actually overloading it. So it is a concern and it could be a situation where if your neighborhood happened to be close to the load capacity already, that's where you get into that. I'm replacing the transformer for my neighborhood. That does exist some places. But in our rec, like, I guess our discussion, and I'll show you what we were discussing, was trying to scale down things that would be EV ready because that would be the electrical requirement and then have things that were EV capable, which would not require you to have electricity at this point, but eventually you would have to. And then I also did like that in the article that Carolyn sent, it talked about creative ways to try to size correctly the electrical that's allowed, so you're not making people drastically oversize the electrical service they have for the actual charging that will occur. So this was one of the things that we were discussing as staff, just as like, how do you balance that issue of like, how much do you need upfront that is already has the capacity versus what might eventually have capacity in the future?
Yeah. And see, I feel like it's, it's hard because obviously we still have a, you know, our restrictions on new overnight accommodations, but I do think that would be an area where it's like, I would, I would struggle frankly to think of a recent hotel build that has not had that as a component of their parking already, just because of the market and just because of where the demand is, like, it's like, we would hope oversight parking would have become, but has sort of been hit or miss with new parking lots for overnight accommodations for hotels specifically for, for commercial hotels. So that, that seems like one where there's none and no incentives because it's happening already. Because if you want, if frankly, if you want to attract a certain type of clientele to patronize your business, you, you make that a part of your business plan. People will stay at the hotel that has, that have chargers if they have an EV. So it does, it does make sense, at least like in the, in the chart you're showing, I think that the focus is on multifamily and that is of course where we are seeing new builds and trying to incentivize more building as well. Really trying to make that most of what gets built in Moab should be multifamily housing at this point, I think, if you ask anybody, so. I think it makes sense to focus on that too. But yeah, with, for sure with incentives for single family, particularly new builds, my goodness. And then, yeah, if there was some sort of creative, creative incentives for existing commercial properties, I feel like that would be.
Or existing single family, again, like the idea that a tenant really wants to be able to charge their EV, but that's a big cost for the homeowner. Like how we could make that a little bit easier on the homeowner and therefore a higher potential that they would say yes to their tenant and pay for that to get done.
I have a couple of notes, I don't know if it'd be the right time to jump in. So a couple of things that I think, I think I captured most that I'll circle back on, but it's exactly this, the sophistication rather than a blanket, this is how we're gonna do every use, every zone, every type of subcategory use, is the sophistication is where I think it has to work, which is where we've suggested, we've gone there. And then into that, I think trying to identify specifically the actual use operations that we'd be looking at versus kind of hypotheticals for that, for example. More or less, I think the hotels were a good example of where it's actually contradictory. What I'm about to say is we've, we went through this mental exercise with staff is where are you charging or where is it most convenient to charge? It is most often not in a commercial district unless you have particular civic space or use where that maybe does make sense. It's gonna be where you're residing, hotel being the opposite of that, you're, it is a dwelling-like situation, so overnight that was where it makes a lot of sense, which is why we're often seeing that already electedly developed. But I think into that, there's a demand capacity where we're seeing the demand, the demands, therefore the response is happening in the market already, but an equity piece that maybe isn't. There was also another mental exercise we went with is, I don't know if this is an actual case or it was just a mental exercise. If we have an individual that really could only find housing in Moab through a multi-household situation, or lucky enough to find a multi-household situation. They already have an EV. Well, are they gonna sell their car and change vehicle types to move into Moab into finding that space where they wouldn't have a reliable charging situation? Or if they're in that multi-household situation already, what's the likelihood of them buying EV if they're not readily available right there? Hence, you can see where I'm focusing in prioritizing multifamily over commercial or single householdness. A new conversation that came up though was about a retrofit incentive. So maybe no incentives or very light incentives with these types of multi-household builds as they're kind of just building in equity and demand. But in a retrofit capacity, maybe that does make sense. Also, the incentives would be much more easily managed by whatever that is. I'm thinking staff, it's really where it's gonna, rubber's gonna hit the road. Basically, our building official is gonna process his permit for free. Well, no, nothing's free. He's still gonna get paid for our time, so where's that coming from? Well, out of the pockets of our community that are paying for his time, so nothing's free anywhere. Even if we wish it could be, it literally from the state can't be. Um, even if we wish it could be, it literally from the state can't be. Um, so I'd wanna be careful with monetary or waivers to a degree, but with that. That permit isn't a full multi household waiver of your building. Plan review, which is massive, it'd be here, we have a retrofit for a single family household, that permit fee is probably something we can. As a community absorb if we believe in that this much. Um, and then as far as other incentives go, I do wanna get careful of, we have very few carrots left. And we've barely, you know, with the height density parking, we're 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 really like, we have very. Few of these left that we're clinging to desperately for much more heavy. Housing, for instance, affordable housing, attainable housing, any housing at all. So giving away some of these. Building height, for example, which is the building officials, like, I don't even know if that's really kind of an essential nexus separation of like, well, you get another. Story because you put in a few EVs, it doesn't really correlate nor do the the profits, but you know, the expense versus the potential yield. They're not the same, it'd be far outweighed.
Yeah.
I mean, screaming deal. So that we really, really love EV and that's all we wanted, maybe that's what we do sell the farm for. Um, but I think that's what I'm saying is, well, let's be with incentives as. Effective with that as possible. So I think especially to a retrofit, that was not brought up, I think, in any conversations previously, I really like that idea of. No, these, these are regulatory provisions for new builds for this particular type of use in these areas. Um, but if you're gonna elect into it, sure, let's help you along best we can. So I really do like this conversations, but I think that hit on all my notes through.
Not want to sell the farm for new chargers, we would like. And then a place to charge their car.
Yeah. Yeah, without doubt.
Unless we are opening up everything to be like seasonal RV. They need chargers, so double hit, you can charge your RV that you live in seasonally and also somebody can charge their. But that's it.
There's an incentive.
Yeah. Um, no, well, I I I think this is on, I think this is on the right, the right track, I think, like. The same with the last conversation about water, this is a sort of a slow roll into. Getting used to the idea of this becoming the standard at some point. While making it not really onerous, while also kind of setting some expectations where it makes sense, um, and it's not overly burdensome. It's gonna be a net benefit to the property owner um who already has. The the availability of of density. In a multifamily development offsetting some of those initial costs anyways, so um.
And yeah, I just think while this whole conversation is about EVs, having EV readiness, i.e. that. Outlet is so multifunctional, well beyond just plugging in EV. That that makes a lot of sense to me, like EV capable is something you can elect to be if you wanna spend that kind of money on it. But EV readiness is kind of a really nice middle ground where that outlet can do so many other things than plugging a car. But.
This from the.
If somebody.
Professional of.
Yeah, not everybody's like me and wants to plug a welder in in my garage, but you know.
Um, this from your local handyman.
Yeah, that being said, uh, it is, yeah, and that makes a lot of sense to me. To have something like that in in most garages and. You know, whether or not you use it for your EV or your welder um.
Well, it's also safe because the things that welders are getting plugged into right now in somebody's garage is not necessarily.
EVs are getting plugged in. Last presentation, you showed us a parking lot with a spaghetti of extension cords and obviously that is not what we want in our community, so. Uh, I have the feeling the fire department would have a strong talking to if that was the kind of thing that we are seeing around here.
Yeah. Yeah.
No daisy chain extension cords plugged into EVs.
We could spin it as a fire fire prevention.
There we go.
Uh, the notes I have so far are. Considering incentives for commercial, single family, especially retrofits um. No incentives for nightly things and then. Uh, where do you wanna go with multifamily or single family?
I I think exactly how it's written on here frankly, makes sense. I, the only thing I could see is bullet point three and multifamily being. I don't know, I don't know what the threshold we're seeing right now is as far as what we would like it to kick in.
I'll add.
Where it pencils best, right?
Mm-hmm. And one of the things that is in here that I I. Thought was maybe especially useful was the idea of units versus spaces. Um, if it's per space and there's more than one space per unit.
Yeah.
Um, it does change the calculus versus if you calculate it per unit, so that could also be a possible. Um, place to make some changes about. Um, it doesn't necessarily have to be per space in the parking lot, it could be per unit in the construction.
Aren't those directly correlated though?
They would be, but you only have one EV ready space there, so it does make a difference because we're talking about factor of one versus. Um, going into percentages.
So twenty.
It's it's basically a different ratio.
So it'd be or a ten unit in this case.
Yeah.
Or ten or fewer, a ten unit household would have the one. But in our multi households, a multiple of one point five, so you'd round that to two, um, so depending on your increments, you're about a third. More um.
Per unit.
Per space.
Per space, yeah, because more spaces per units.
So so that, yeah, this kind of gives that more more of a dynamic variable for um. Fewer installations, I guess, is kind of where that could end up. Um, we did offer that run some ad, I'm not sure we had it all prepared. That question, what you've just asked, we actually worked with the building officials, some of these thresholds. Energy at what point it's a, it is a massive.
Mm-hmm.
Monetary beyond the actual materials for conduit or readiness itself is the electrical upgrades.
We don't have a calculation on that, but it is how we got to the ten percent, ten percent was um. Barry ran some rough numbers on. One of our like construction projects coming through, like what if they had to do this? And then he also started looking into. What if they had to upgrade electrical service? What if they had to install forty amps per spot, which is where Carolyn's article comes in, maybe you don't. Um, and also what if you had to replace a transformer? So based on that, we had considered something around like twenty percent, like the Salt Lake City example there. And scaled it down to the ten ten for that purpose was to try to reduce that like. Tens of thousands of dollar kind of impact on somebody upfront for maybe capacity they don't need yet.
And I think this is in line with a bit, if you might use an example of tax bracketing where if you just cross a particular threshold, you're you're in a. A de- a devalued state compared to the rest of that tax bracket. So we were seeing that there was that kind of in that middle rung, if you if you have. A small multi household development, it's not gonna be that big increase, but you can likely absorb with the existing. Infrastructure that. And then a much larger development's gonna have one or multiple transformers there installing themselves. So you, it'll be accommodated into that design, there's that middle piece of it, a certain unit. We were seeing, oh, you you're gonna trip this, but the project. That increase of cost actually was significant um for that particular. Mid to low sized, I think if you're mid to higher, it's still not an issue, but mid to lower, ooh, that's, that could be it. And no, no matter where we draw lines, there will always be that tripping mechanism, but um. That was something we did identify, which is why I think the ten to ten was where we ended up coming with this.
Cool. Okay, Jill, you still there?
Yep, I am. You guys are hitting everything right on, so.
Well, you deserve a, you deserve a break after running many, many meetings while I was. Last month, so.
Oh, it's all good, yeah, it's been, it is what it is, so. We do what we can do, right?
Yes. Um, okay, so we, I can continue to work on the multifamily piece and see if we can think about. Any other options uh as I outlined before and then I will come back with that. Uh, any, any other guidance? Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good discussion, thank you, you're so, I. You're so wonderful, you're like, here's what you talked about last time that none of us remember, so thank you for reminding me what my questions were. Three months ago, um, much appreciated. Okay, uh, let's see, where did my agenda go? My agenda disappeared. I don't know where my agenda went, but we are, oh, there we go. Uh, on to item six, future agenda items.
Alrighty, um. I don't know if you're gonna believe me, but I believe on.
Wait, wait, I'm gonna guess.
Our next April eighth.
Wait, wait, what is it?
Excuse me, tenth, eighth is the city council, tenth, April tenth. Uh, yep.
Too many things.
No, no, you're right there, is it's very likely we'll be seeing our lines backfaced. Um, we're in final communications with getting their application over the threshold, we've identified already a number of. Conditions of approval will probably be seeing, but then within that, those that. The division or the review divisions have decided, no, we need these solved, that's what we're doing right now, so we're we're very close to the end of of that. Um, generation series to where we're final product, getting that out, so we very likely will be looking at at least that. Um. I might look to my staff on any other action items. That may be ready, um, we've seen. A great number of uptake and administrative approvals, everything from changes of use um. Lot of plating elements, which now through our new subdivision ordinance are all coming through us.
Cool.
Um. The one element, speaking of subdivision update, is while we will typically do this in the future. Is a part of the subdivision ordinance, there are still approvals, a preliminary plat approval specifically. That requires a public hearing, yet it's an administrative approval through the DRT and Land Use Authority as a planning coordinator, whoever that might be. This is uh signatory. Um. Will typically be held as we're anything anticipating at planning commission meetings, so we'll open the public hearing, close it. No action item, we're just exercising statutory requirements. However, uh, it is capable for us to hold that outside of planning commission meeting, which I'm not terribly thrilled about, but we have a a subdivision. That is currently going through and for sake of time and where we are at within their review period. It's possible, well, as of tonight, we'll be posting for that public hearing to be held on the Monday before the planning commission meeting. Um, while it's only three days, um, or two days difference rather, three days difference rather. Um, it it, that was their request, and so they, I think, have some. Ability to negotiate, so anyway, the first public hearing not held in planning commission meeting for that, so that'll be the hideout estates. Major subdivision, but it is a name, it's a six unit subdivision, so it's just barely out of tier of what would be minor, which wouldn't have required. A public hearing anyway. So that will be happening next week, so I'm happy to plug that kind of into the community that that will be noticed and published.
Not us.
It is not you.
Interesting.
Yeah, so it will be just planning staff in this room. For holding public hearings.
Know that there's more nights.
Well, that's, it'll be held during work hours, which is also something.
That.
We're gonna.
Yeah.
I'm a little like, I want to hold them during. Time, so it's convenient for us and also for the applicants, but for the public, this is where submitted testimony is like, if you have something to say.
Yeah.
Please submit it, but again, this is administrative at this point, so there isn't really much of a. Hey, I don't agree with this, or hey, this is in the right place, it's if it meets the standards.
Interesting, yeah, yeah.
Required, so it's it's a bit of a funny function, we were just talking the Utah Land Use. Yeah, Land Use Institute Conference was today that our staff participated in.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and it's funny how, you know, that they're still from a state perspective, a mandatory public hearing for something that's administrative, yet. They cleaned everything else out.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Interesting.
Those two items at least, anything else from planning staff that we have updates on? Okay, I think we're, the number of things running through DRT right now, um. But won't be likely ready for April tenth, but I think a number of things that could be possibly ready by the end of, end of April. All right, any other uh housekeeping items from staff? I think so, not necessarily.
I I will say, um, I I caught the mayor on the way in, I asked if she had received any applicants. For our open spots, um. Keeping in mind that I will be away for a while in several months, um. And I don't want us to struggle to make quorum every single meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, she had not, so I think I would love if we could reinvigorate that effort, not only. Using the city's official channels, because I just, I went on the city Facebook and the one from in November still says applications due in November. Um, I feel like just making one that doesn't have a.
Mm-hmm.
Due date. Um, and then we could, everyone could sort of share that and and push that, because I do feel like. We really need to have a fully. Uh, appointed planning commission.
Yeah.
Um, just for, for Jill's sake, so she can stop being on Zoom when she's somewhere for something. Um.
Oh, very much agreed. I did recently talk to Lisa about reposting out of our customary avenues, Facebook specific.
Facebook specifically.
So it's interesting that, you know, it's not surprising because we never did circle back, like, hey, did we get it out or us actually work with the material, so I'll make a note for staff, let's make that a prior.
Yeah, and then we can all, we can all also interesting really encourage people to. To go for it.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, there's actually a person we somewhat related, housing vista position, we're still. We've made an offer, we haven't heard back on a particular person, but then I had another applicant that may not. I think they believe maybe it's a full time position, not a vista position through AmeriCorps. Um, and I'm like, hmm, they might be an interesting person.
Yeah.
Um, apparently they're they're a long time local and they're a recent attorney, uh, recently, but they're going through. A new experience where they're like, maybe I'm gonna take a break for minutes and something like this, so.
Cool.
Anybody out there that's interested, but yeah, that's interesting.
There's like five of us in this town, so probably know who they are.
About to say, she's like, ask around the city, they'll know who I am, I'm, so I'm not gonna put this person out on record, but you were.
Who's gonna say, I, there's.
I asked.
There's ten choices.
Johanna, if she's, I was like, you know, she probably runs in your circles, but she is um. Acquaintance with one of our city council people, put it that way. Um, so I'm sure that you would know her.
Awesome.
Um, anyway, so she's listening, hey, you wanna join planning commission?
Water expert?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Land use of all things.
Fabulous, um. Fantastic, that's really great to hear, um, and then, uh, the. Oh gosh, the only other thing, I had it, it was in my brain.
Could it be the zoning title update?
No, it wasn't that, but I would also love to hear about that.
Sure, uh, we've met with Michael, so we've we've been meeting in a series on module one, I think at last update, I kind of gave you guys that. I now have met with administration, Johanna and I have. Um, and we've gotten some really clear direction, that's really exciting, it is a bit of a reposition and pivot, which I think. Is encouraging to me because I I'm not sure I was quite. In the right, we're on the right track, so I think this is a much more aggressive, surgical, but also really effective way to go. Um, which will likely have a lot more. Uh, play with planning commission, we'll we'll probably be bringing things to you, uh. Well, I don't know, Michael does want to get things pretty polished up before we start putting them out there, but the way in which we're approaching this, I think is gonna be. Much more aggressive, so we have now, and I've been saying this, that we could have gotten this done by the end of the year, I think with this particular tack. We can do that, um, it's gonna take some pretty significant staff. Focus to do that, but I think we now have.
You have those now.
Capacity that we have staffs. So that is a very exciting update, um, we haven't totally formalized the approach, but we are now framing the approach. So that's good.
Oh, I I remembered I was gonna say, I think particularly, I think the push also with with trying to. Get someone new on the planning commission is that it is also an election year in the city, and if anyone is contemplating running for office. There is nothing better to prepare you for that than being on. An active board as I am looking at our city council member, former planning commissioner in the audience here. Um, so that, you know, I think making that connection too is is a great way to. Say like, hey, if you're interested in figuring out what it feels like a little bit and also getting. Figuring out what it feels like a little bit and also getting a really great. I think as far as what city council deals with, everything technical that they ever deal with comes through us first. So that's, I think Luca's nodding prepares you well. So.
Our only, our biggest draw so far, we've tapped in on people, gotten interest is you have, I will put, you have to live within city limits. So I've talked to a lot of people, they're like, I. Oh, where do you live? Oh, county.
I regularly give crap to the county planning commission members who live in the city.
Right, right.
I'm like, guys.
Right. Right.
Like, come on, yeah, it's, it's more fun and exciting sometimes out there. It's a little bit of a wild west, but. You know.
Yes.
Uh, oh, uh, the other thing, speaking of the county planning commission, that's what it was. Um, I was, um, I reached out to you by a county planning commissioner. Who had mentioned that they had, were talking about potentially bringing in the property rights ombuds, ombudsman. Again, to do another sort of presentation, Q and A, something like that and coordinating possibly with the city to, to kind of make that happen. It's been, it's been like six years now since he's come down. I think it was in the context of. It was right around the time of the hotel moratorium. But that's always a really interesting, useful, informative. Thing, whether it's on a specific topic that we're dealing with. I don't know if that was their intent, but. They had just flagged that that, if that was something the city might be interested in, in also being involved in, and I said, for sure.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah.
Absolutely, so. I know with our attorneys, we've been trying to coordinate for a while now, just bigger fires. But a more specific training, it was actually a couple of years ago for a legislative update. I was doing a whole training and let, plus the legislative update for Moab specifically. And they kind of just got put in the back burner. So we still have that. Order out for our attorneys, but maybe this is a convenient time to, to meet and. Um, speaking of that, so. I think we will likely be, or maybe. It'll be at council, we'll just recommend that you, uh, participate in, um, viewing that as. Updates on some of the really significant land use bills that just come through the session, which are pretty broad reach in a lot of ways and will affect Moab in pretty significant ways. Most of the time we're right, we're, they will, they do affect us, but not in a way that's gonna directly change. We're kind of already doing a lot of the things those are. They're, they're. Now mandating, but there are some things for sure that are gonna shift.
I hear we can now enforce illegal overnight rentals using.
We were just talking about that. I wasn't sure if that actually went through or not, so.
Well, I don't know as far as what's been signed yet, hasn't been signed. That, that's past. I don't know if it's been signed by the governor.
And then open the public meetings at training.
Yes.
If you've seen that, please, yeah. It's five minutes, I think, or, you know.
You said that and I couldn't believe it.
It's like, I don't believe it. I don't believe your timing at all.
She did. I was gonna say, Summer just emailed us.
Yeah.
Got to do it every year. It's be like, it's.
Yep.
Seventh of the public meetings at training.
Yeah.
Cool. I, yeah, great, great to hear. There's some stuff moving through and Alexi, thank you for all of the information tonight. Great, I will adjourn this meeting at seven fifty nine P M.
You couldn't wait thirty more seconds? No. That's right. Thanks, everybody.
Under two hours.